Call meeting order. All please rise. Can I ask you to join me in a moment of reflection on the business that's before us this evening? Please join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Clerk, please take the role.
Alderman Violet.
Here.
Alderman Begley.
Here.
Alderman Bassel.
Here.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Here.
Alderman Key.
Here.
Alderman McGrogan.
Here.
Alderman McGovern.
Here.
Alderman Clifford.
Present.
No special presentations tonight. The consent calendar, we've got the approval amendments of the city council meeting from April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, the approval of the payroll and voucher list for the period ending April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, and approval of a proclamation recognizing the month of May twenty twenty-four as Motorcycle Awareness Month. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Moved by Alderman Clifford, seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion? Rule call, please.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
All right, just tonight, a couple things, and there's no sealed business, excuse me. Just, we had a storm this afternoon, hail that I haven't seen in my forty years out here, but still some will sit in my front yard when I pull out of the driveway coming here tonight, so it's quite a feat. But just as word, caution, as I was driving here from, from home tonight to the, to City Hall, there's a lot of leaves on the ground and they're all wet, and so it's kind of slippery, so, you know, as you approach intersections, especially with schools, kids, you know, be careful, you know, use caution as you drive through town for the next couple of days until those get off to, get off the road then. Next thing on the agenda, the city has declared a portion of an alley right-of-way is unused and surplus property, and it is in best interest to the city to vacate the right-of-way and sell it to adjacent property owners for their use and enjoyment. Therefore, I recommend, recommend and request a motion to direct the city engineer to prepare a plan of vacation for the entire twenty-foot alley right-of-way immediately south and adjacent to the property located at one-two-two-three-three South Harold Avenue. Moved by Alderman Key, seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then a motion to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance for the vacation and sale of the entire twenty-foot right-of-way immediately south and adjacent to the property located at one-two-two-three-three South Harold Avenue.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Violet, seconded by Alderman Clifford. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And tonight is my privilege, excuse me, can't talk tonight, to make two appointments to the Recreation Advisory Board. Two of our longstanding members, Denise Hyker and Linda Scappa, decided to step down after probably thirty years or so on, on the board, and just thought it was time to, to move on. So with that, I'd like to make the recommendation that these two individuals be appointed for five-year terms expiring on the May seventh, twenty twenty-eight. Seems like a long time out there, but it'll come quickly, I assure you. I spent about twenty years on that board, so. First one being Margaret O'Malley, and the second one, Kristen Restivo. So with that, someone please.
Make them.
Moved by Alderman Key, seconded by Alderman Clifford. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, ladies.
Congratulations.
Well, you do a good job. You're hearing some big footsteps there, but I'm sure, we have a lot of, a lot of confidence in you guys. I'm sure you will do well for our citizens. All right, city clerk, anything?
I, no report, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank everyone for their condolences of the sudden passing of my uncle Dan Dunn, who was a forty-year resident of Payless Heights. He and my Aunt Helen raised their family here, and he loved everything about this town, loved all that you were doing for this town, spent decades up at these fields and throughout this, the neighborhood, so I just want to thank you for those kind words.
All right, thank you. City treasurer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report.
How about city attorney?
No report.
All right, communications, anyone have tonight? All right. Any city citizens wishing to address the council tonight? Standing committee?
Go.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ma'am, come, come up to the microphone, give your name and address, please. I apologize, mister.
Good evening all. This is my wife, Luria. My name is Philip Argus. We live in Payless Heights. We resided on that property for thirty-one years, and we have two concerns.
What, what's, what's your address? I'm sorry, sir.
Sixty-three, twenty-five, West One Twenty-Fourth Place.
Can you repeat your name again?
Philip. Luria Argus.
L-A-U-R-I-A. Thank you.
Sir, could you speak into the microphone?
No.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Much better.
Okay. We came here because there were two concerns we wish to address to the panel, and that is both safety and law enforcement concerns regarding our two mid-sized dogs that we own. We have a soft wheat terrier who is high-spirited and a Victorian Bulldog pedigree. The high-spirited terrier dog has a tendency of jumping over fences anywhere from three to four feet. We had a fence installed, what, about seven years? About?
Three-twenty.
Three-twenty-one, a six-foot fence. The issue here is that we were unable to attach the fence to our neighbor's side of their fence, which is on the west side of our property. I'm sorry, east, east. So there's about a thirty-one-foot span that runs along without no restriction for the dog to be contained on our property. We had law enforcement cited us at least three times, and we had to pay fees for those violations because the dog had run off to the street. Now we have the dog on a, on a, on a leash, a thirty, what, thirty-five-foot cable, and still the, still attempts to jump over that area that's not enforced by any fence. So I was, I'm addressing the panel if they could come up with a solution, you know, to address this.
The reason we're here today is because when we had the fence put in, we had both neighbors, both neighbors said that they would allow us to attach the fences. In between something, the length of our, I don't know what, I can't say, but the one neighbor said absolutely not, you cannot go on my easement. And there's a law in Payless Heights that you can't have two fences running alongside of each other. That's where our problem is. We had to get a special allowance because the neighbor who had a wood fence made a little fence about this big for his garbage cans that faces our house. We had to get a special allowance for our fence to cover it so we could not have to see his garbage cans, but it stops right where his fence is. So our fence is here, his is there, and there's this much space for Christine to run out. And at the back, we've got the transformer also, so when the electric company comes in, or whenever they can, or whatever, that's in the back. We were going to make it available for everyone, but beside the point. The thing is, our, the one neighbor who will not let us go on the easement, so he made a line, he stuck brown in our fences here, this much easement, and then that much easement for him, so there's this much room. And my whole backyard is a mess because I've got all kind of mismatched things trying to keep her in the yard. And one day I found her, she had jumped over the fence with, with the collar on. Luckily, she had the extra leash. She wasn't hanging by her neck, but she was on the other side of pots and pans and garbage cans, and it looks, my backyard looks terrible. It really does, because there's, we need some suggestion from you, because even our, it's very frustrating.
Well, maybe I could suggest that the, the building commissioner stop by and take a look at it, and at least address it some way, and see if he can come up with some ideas, then maybe help you remedy your situation, without going there and, you know, figuring it out yourself. But I mean, he would be the best one to be able to do that, I think.
It's, we also got an estimate for an electric fence, which was over.
Invisitable fence, or whatever they call it?
It was over three thousand dollars, and both of us are fixing, I mean, really, it's, lived there for thirty-one years, you know, it's like.
Sure, I understand.
Yeah, thirty-four years. And it's like, where's that money coming from? If the car breaks down?
We've, we've got your name and address, and we'll, we'll pass it on to Frank Giordano, who's our building commissioner. He happened to stop by and make an appointment with you and make sure you guys are both there, and see if there's some way we can remedy for it, you know.
Do you have a copy or a, a copy of your plot of survey?
Yes. Yes. Who, who gets it?
I have several copies. I wasn't sure.
No, I want you to give that to, I just want to make sure that you give that to the building inspector, so he's got something to go by. Is this, is this the spot you're talking about, here?
Yep.
This is your property? Whose house is this? Yours?
Not his.
This lady's here. And you just want to go from here to here, to your house?
Correct. On the east side.
This is, this the side you were talking about? So this is the open spot?
Correct.
This your fence all the way around here?
Yep.
So you go from here, well.
And a new fence installed.
Well, if they go from there to there, that seems to be on your property land, I think, but as the mayor said, I don't see a, a problem what you got here. But I would have Frank finalize that and look at that. From what you're showing me there, I don't see a problem.
It's the easement.
No, you will have Frank contact.
Why don't you give me that, sir, and then give me your, put, put your phone number on there, too. Here I go. There you go. Put your name and phone number on there. Great, okay. Very much. Give us the day or so, we'll get over with that. Okay, sure, my pleasure. Okay, great. Hopefully, we can work it out for you.
Thank you very much.
So, so we're here for. All right. Any other citizens wishing to address the council? If not, finance committee?
Mr. Mayor, there's no report this evening.
All right. Alderman Bassel, public safety?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have more items on the agenda, but I'd just like to remind everyone that school will be letting out soon, and to be especially cautious on the streets, especially with a number of vehicles, both licensed and unlicensed, that seem to be on the road every day. Also, I would like to point out an article that I found in the Tribune Sunday regarding a latest scam. Might be of interest to many of us sitting here or listening on TV, or friends and neighbors, or parents especially. There's a new, and this is the headline in the paper, "Mexican Cartel Scam Is Preying on Seniors and Their Timeshares." Well, now there's a new, new scam going around where people receive calls from companies that proclaim to help them sell their timeshares, which we all know evidently is not an easy thing to do, if you own a timeshare and want out. After they make an initial contact with many different calls, many different attempts at contacts, the, the solicitor requests fees for advertising, for listing, et cetera, et cetera, and soon the, the fees turn into fines supposedly from the Mexican government or from wherever else your timeshare might be located. And the fees keep mounting and mounting, and no action is taken on trying to sell your timeshare because it's a scam. At the end of the article, they cite one couple who was too embarrassed to release their names. They were scammed out of nine hundred thousand dollars on, on trying to get rid of a timeshare. A timeshare that cost about two thousand dollars a year in maintenance, and a couple thousand dollars to purchase. So it's something to be aware of because it's a new, it's a new scam rolling around, and if you know anyone, or if you're, maybe you or your parents own a timeshare, maybe you're happy with your timeshare, et cetera, et cetera, but let them be aware that this is happening now. Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Mayor, can I just add something? This Friday is cap on top of both of the Dunkin' Donuts in town, and they're raising, the police officers will be on the roof of, of both Dunkin' Donuts, and they're raising money for Special Olympics. So, you know, this Friday, it's from five o'clock in the morning until noon, so drop by over there. I know that every time they have a fundraiser, they're giving out hats and T-shirts and all this other stuff, so come out and help them raise money for that good cause.
Super idea. All right, anything else? You're done? Municipal grounds and property, Alderman Begley.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I have a motion to approve payment for McLeod Aquatics to treat algae and chara at Lake Catherine with Public Works, and Lake Catherine splitting the cost fifty-fifty in the amount of ten thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty-six cents.
Moved by Alderman Begley. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion? Rule call.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Next, I have a motion to approve the rebuilding of the nature center ramp with Beaver Den Builders Incorporated in an amount not to exceed eleven thousand dollars. And this is the one out in front of the main nature center there.
Okay. Moved by Alderman Begley, seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion? Rule call.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes. Next, I have a motion to approve the purchase of materials for the nature center ramp from Shillings in the amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
Moved by Alderman Begley.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion? Rule call.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
And finally, I have a motion to approve the Lake Catherine Trail Link Trailhead Parking Lot, which is I dot contract number six-one-K four-one, item eleven on the I dot April twenty-sixth, twenty, twenty-four letting to deconstruction incorporated in the amount of eight hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and two dollars and fifty cents.
Moved by Alderman Begley.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Violet. Discussion?
Holy cow.
Rule call.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman McGrogan.
Yes.
Alderman McGovern.
Yes.
Alderman Clifford.
Aye.
Alderman Violet.
Yes.
Alderman Begley.
Yes.
Alderman Bassel.
Aye.
Alderman Lewandowski.
Aye.
And that's the end of my report this evening. Mayor, thank you so much.
Just if I could maybe touch on the parking lot, it's been going on for a year. That eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars is coming from the Southwest Conference of Mayors through I dot, and that's eighty percent of the cost. The other twenty percent, we got a grant from MWRD to pay to, to that balance. So actually, it's not costing, the whole lot's not costing us anything, is what it comes down to.
Great.
Great.
So, it comes out to one point one million or something like that, so.
How many more parking spots do you know? Do we get quite a few?
I think it's forty-four.
Yeah.
Forty-four?
And premierable pa, you know, papers and stuff.
It's gonna look great, I think, yeah.
All right. Planning zoning, Alderman McGovern?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. I have a motion to approve a petition filed by Hamiza Saleem on behalf of Wise Guys Barber Lounge LLC to allow Wise Guys Barber Lounge LLC to operate a barber shop as a special use with the premises located at one-three-four-zero-five South Bridgeland and contained within the following pin, two-four-three-two-three-zero-zero-zero-three-nine-zero-zero-zero-zero.
Moved by Alderman McGovern. Is there a second?
No second.
Seconded by Alderman McGrogan. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have a discussion with this myself, okay? This is a petition that began at the zoning board, and it was never even as much as seconded. And somehow, it made it to the planning and zoning committee. Now, this was discussed at the planning and zoning committee, and the first ballot on this was never seconded. Therefore, it should have been defeated right away. But then we were informed that this was supposed, was, it was required for this to go to the city council, after it's been defeated without seconds at both, on both levels. So after that, and under old business with the planning and zoning committee, we brought the motion back up a second time, and it was forward and tied at two, which is still, in my opinion, not a majority. And now it's still here, and.
To vote on.
To vote on. And I'd, I'd like to find out what the procedures were, because we were told that it was mandatory for us to bring this one, special one, to the city council.
The final determination from anybody filing a petition for special use or any zoning amendment, final determination by the city council. So every person that files a petition has the right to have the city council vote on their final determination. Whether, whether your committee has approved it, or is only board approved or not, they have the final right to have it heard.
So at the end of the day, we did the right thing by bringing it back into here.
Absolutely. So it's, you guys are the final determiners of whether that gets approved or not, and that's, every person that files a petition has that, they have that right to have it heard by you guys, and ladies.
Okay. Because I was very, I was very curious about it, because there have been fines, there's been stop, stop work orders on it, everything else, and thank you for explaining. Okay? That's all I got.
There was a second, ma'am.
Any other questions? Any discussion with the petitioners?
Anybody want to talk?
Hi, my name is Judd.
Hamza.
Sorry, can you just speak up a little louder so I can take your name, sir?
Hi. We were just saying our names. Hamza, Judd. We were trying to get the barber shop approved. We have a few locations and other areas. One, the closest one is in Payless Park, and we've been there for five years now. And, and so, yeah, I just was trying to, like, I guess there was some misunderstanding on a few things. One was that it says Barber Lounge, but it's just like a classy barber shop. It's not like a hangout or anything, and we don't serve alcohol or anything like that. And then another issue, I guess, there was a person that we had here, we, we gave the name multiple times, that we were intending to put him as a manager there, but I guess without our knowledge in the beginning, he, he thought it would be like good to take it upon himself and try to do some work there to try to gain percentage or whatever. But that was obviously, as soon as we knew about it, like, we don't deal with him anymore, and he's not a part of it at all. But we do have a, a few barber shops. The one in Payless Park is called Wiseman Barber Lounge. I mean, we also, we have good relationships with all of the, the cities and villages that we're in. Like, we, we know Ms. Kathy from the office, and she, you know, said if you guys contacted her, she'll tell you, you know, we do good business. We also have a, a shop called Goodman's Barber Lounge in River North in the city, and we have very good reviews, very good everything, you know, we, you know, we've been in the business a long time. And, and so, yeah, it's just, it's really just a professional barber shop, a high-classed one, that we were looking to, to bring in.
So, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One, you know, we discussed this at one of the meetings, and one of the things that it's a, it's like, they're in a little bit of a, a trick bag as well, because whoever owns the shopping center and whoever gave them the lease basically didn't advise them that they're needed to come to us and get certain types of approval. And I think if they, you said you have a three- or five-year lease?
Uh, yeah.
You know, and so, in a way, they put the cart before the horse, and they started to do the work, which you alluded to. And, you know, they were not aware of some of the things, and they're getting fined heavily by the city if this is passed. And, but as they pointed out to us, which is the reason it's at this meeting, as Alderman McGovern pointed out, is that that person they dismissed because he kind of went out of bounds. Well, he did go out of bounds. And so, you know, we spent some time on it at the meeting, probably a half hour talking about it, which we don't have to do today, probably. But, you know, they did say that they had these other recommendations, and outside of the fact that they went across the yellow line a couple of times, they said that they tried to make amends, so.
Any other questions?
And then, and then, but also, as, as Alderman McGrogan said, they have already been cited for a lack of building permit. They've already been cited for, for no business license, okay? Their building crew has never registered here at City Hall, okay? And there's, and plus, they're, they're being fined for the work stop order, the physician, too. So I.
But when you say their working crew hasn't been reg, you mean they were contractors, or?
The contractor. Yeah, yeah. It wasn't, from what I believe, I'm not a hundred percent sure, he wasn't really a contractor.
Yeah.
He didn't have, he didn't have any kind of a business.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. We didn't, with all the stuff going on, we didn't set forth our contractors yet. But again, yes, what she's referring to is the person that we said that we were going to have manage it, he did stuff without us knowing about it. And, and so, that's why this, was that like problem, and it was dismissed, we dismissed him. Again, we know, like, what we're, you know, like, how we're gonna do things and everything like that. We've had multiple barber shops, and we did everything the right way. You could ask all of our city people, you know. So, yeah, this, that's why we dismissed him as soon as we knew anything about it. And, and so, that was the problem that was holding us back.
And how long did it take, how long did it take you before you found out about what was going on?
So, our lease has commenced December first. In December, we, like, that's when, right away, everybody found out, you know? And that's when we dismissed him right away.
You distanced him. Did you ever get any kind of daily progress reports from him, like any business would normally do?
So, he, he's not, like, the business itself, it wasn't like officially open, obviously. And so, and he's also not like a contractor or anything like that. So, we didn't, we were unaware, we didn't think he was gonna do anything. And, and so, yeah, we, we really didn't know what happened, and it was really quick. Like, again, we started, our lease starts December, we, and like, in December, very quickly, this all happened.
So you hired a manager, and you never had any communications with him?
So, he was like a manager that we were gonna sit there, right? So originally, from our barber shops, he's a barber, and we were gonna have him as like, oh, this is the next shop we're gonna open, and we're gonna have him manage it. So, but of course, there was nothing really to communicate yet, because we didn't really like officially open, do anything yet, or anything like that.
So he never communicated to you that he started working on it?
No, he didn't. He, in his, yeah, in his mind, like.
Your, your corporation never saw any kind of purchase orders for any kind of material?
No, there was no even material that they put in there. It was just, like, I guess a demolition thing, you know, that he was doing. There was, like, there was no purchases at all.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, true.
On your application, the hours of operation TBD, can you just, do you have?
So, so, and like, whenever we opened the barber shops, of course, in the beginning, the first year, like, we, we'd like to open broader hours than normal, just because we're trying to gain clientele, and being open is a form of advertisement. So, we, we have like broader hours in the beginning, and then towards, once after the first year passes by, we're pretty much more built and established, and so we have much shorter hours.
What are the usual hours?
So, in the beginning, what we normally do is we do eight to ten, just for the first year, just to build up the business, try to gain as much clientele as possible. And then after that, we do anywhere from like eight to seven, eight to five on the weekends, stuff like that.
Seven days a week, or?
Yeah, seven days.
I know some barber shops are.
They close on Mondays normally.
Sunday and Mondays, right, the barber weekends.
Any other questions?
Alderman McGrogan?
Yes.
Alderman McGovern?
No.
Alderman Clifford?
No.
Alderman Violet?
No.
Alderman Begley?
Yes.
Alderman Bassel?
No.
Alderman Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alderman Key?
No.
Motion fails. Sorry, guys. All right. Alderman Key, recreation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're getting to the portion of the year that activities really ramp up at the rec center, and just in, in one month's time, we're gonna start Concerts in the Park. The first one's actually on June sixth, and the group playing is called Mr. Myers, which is a calypso band. And then the, in, later in the same month, June twentieth, Fortunate Sons is gonna be playing. That's a cover band that covers Creedence Clearwater music. And so, there are sports activities and team activities that are starting up, so if you want your family involved in those, please visit the rec center website. It's Payless. It's, uh, Payless, Payless Heights Rec dot org. And you can actually sign up for activities on that. Or you can go to the Payless Heights, um, city website and then follow the link to the rec center. And then we'll get you going on all that. So, and I'll just keep everyone apprised of all the different activities as we are moving closer. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alden Clifford, roads and construction?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any formal report, but I do have an announcement. Uh, I dot will be closing the east leg of the intersection of one hundred and thirty-first Street and Southwest Highway for storm sewer, for storm sewer box culvert removal and a new culvert installation at Mill Creek. Both eastbound and westbound traffic on one hundred and thirty-first Street will be closed near this intersection starting at seven AM on May twentieth, twenty twenty-four, to November fourth, twenty twenty-four. During this time, I dot signed detour route will guide motorists to use Southwest Highway one hundred and thirty-fifth and Harlem Avenue to access one hundred and thirty-first Street. Other than that, that's in my report.
Thank you, sir.
Do you, can you go, how far east is that going, one hundred and thirty-first?
It's going, the work is down at Southwest Highway and one hundred and thirty-first. So you cannot get down through there from your, either avenue going, and the other way. You have to access it, uh...
So you won't be able to go by Payless Country Club, basically?
Right.
Not off one hundred and thirty-first.
That'll be interesting.
It's gonna be closed. Well, you have to access it from Southwest Highway or go up to one hundred and thirty-fifth.
Yeah.
Over to the range, you're gonna...
License and permits and franchises, Alden Lewandowski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No report this evening.
All right. Water and sewer, Alden Violet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the final payment to Performance Pipeline for the twenty twenty-three sewer rehabilitation program in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
Moved by Alden Violet, second by Alden Key. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alden McGovern?
Yes.
Alden Clifford?
Aye.
Alden Violet?
Yes.
Alden Bigley?
Yes.
Alden Basso?
Aye.
Alden Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alden Key?
Yes.
Alden McGrogan?
Yes.
I move to approve painting of approximately two hundred and two hydrants by Giant Maintenance and Restoration in an amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. And this is an ongoing program. We do some of these every year.
Second.
Moved by Alden Violet, second by Alden Key. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alden Clifford?
Aye.
Alden Violet?
Yes.
Alden Bigley?
Yes.
Alden Basso?
Aye.
Alden Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alden Key?
Yes.
Alden McGrogan?
Yes.
Alden McGovern?
Yes.
I move to award the twenty twenty-four clean and CCTV program to Sewer Tech for their lowest bid in the amount of one hundred thirty-five thousand, five hundred twenty dollars.
Second.
Moved by Alden Violet, second by Alden Key. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alden Violet?
Yes.
Alden Bigley?
Yes.
Alden Basso?
Aye.
Alden Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alden Key?
Yes.
Alden McGrogan?
Yes.
Alden McGovern?
Yes.
Alden Clifford?
Aye.
I move to award the Seventieth Avenue Lift Station Rehabilit, Rehabilitation Project uh, to mark Crestmere Reconstruction for their lowest bid in the amount of five hundred forty-seven thousand, six hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved by Alden Violet, second by Alden Key. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alden Bigley?
Yes.
Alden Basso?
Aye.
Alden Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alden Key?
Yes.
Alden McGrogan?
Yes.
Alden McGovern?
Yes.
Alden Clifford?
Aye.
Alden Violet?
Yes. I move to go out to bid for the twenty twenty-four sewer rehabilitation project.
Second.
I'm having a hard time with that one.
Moved by Alden Violet, second by Alden Key. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. You got it again here now, too.
I move to approve payment for professional engineering services with Lockwood, Andrews, and Newman for the Seventieth Avenue Lift Station Rehabilit, Rehabilitation.
That strikes me.
You got it.
The Southwest Highway Lift Station and the water reservoir reconditioning projects in the amount of thirty-five thousand, eight hundred thirty-one dollars and five cents.
Second.
You have to get shorter words in your...
Absolutely.
Moved by Alden Violet, second by Alden Key.
Alden Basso?
Aye.
Alden Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alden Key?
Yes.
Alden McGrogan?
Yes.
Alden McGovern?
Yes.
Alden Clifford?
Aye.
Alden Violet?
Yes.
Alden Bigley?
Yes.
I move to approve payment for professional engineering services with RJN Group for the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four sewer rehab design and reconstruction. On-call underground infrastructure services, twenty twenty-four CCTV and MH inspections rendering through April fifth, twenty twenty-four in the amount of twenty thousand, four hundred ninety-two dollars and forty-nine cents.
Second.
Moved by Alden Violet, second by Alden Key. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alden Lewandowski?
Aye.
Alden Key?
Yes.
Alden McGrogan?
Yes.